Good evening, and welcome to our school committee meeting for this Wednesday, July 17th, 2019. It is 7:00 PM. I would call our meeting to order. First on our agenda is to rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that we are being broadcast live as well as being recorded for future rebroadcast. I'm assuming we don't have any student representatives here. We'll move on to our public comment and communications section, which seeing how we do not have any public here, I'm going to assume we have none of that, and move on to any old business anyone would like to cover. I just, I was just watching the selectmen's meeting, and the old grammar school came up at last night's meeting, so I just-
Did Doc get in touch with them again?
No, it wasn't Doc, actually. It sounds like they're considering it for police station.
Really?
Yeah. So, just something for everyone to kind of chew on. I know none of us were really here for, most of the committee weren't here for the old school, old grammar school building decommissioning committee, whatever that was, our disposition committee. So, it was brought up, I'm not sure if they'll reach out to us at some point, some of their point of just wanting to do a piece of liability study on it to see what it means. They're running out of space at the current building. We've known that for some time, that they were going to need a new police station at some point, so they're considering that. So, it's some old, old, old business, but just wanted to raise it as a fairly recent development that if you want to go out and check out the water selections meeting, it's probably about 20 minutes into the meeting, it's a pretty short meeting, you can catch that. Any new business anyone would like to raise that's on the agenda? Okay. With that, we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Mr. Mainz.
Well, so, the only thing that I have on the agenda today was that I was able to meet with Bill Kundoff, and he did print out for me, and I will pass this along to you. But, this is a map of the schools, as well as the trails and some of the water and so forth. So, one of the things that came up was, as you know, the committee wants to know who owns what. And so, now we have at least a better understanding of if, where the trails are, at least who they're going to belong to.
Yeah.
It does border on some private properties, but we now have a really good idea, and I don't know where all the trails go and so forth, and the trails are not demarked here, but the cross-country course is marked here as well. And it also has information on some wetlands that are part of the area, but, so that the next time the committee wants to, if the trail committee wants to come back to us, now we have at least a document that we can work with that indicates what is town property, and honestly, it doesn't tell me what's town and what is school, but it does indicate what is either town or school, which is great. The yellow highlights around here are everything that is related to the school and so forth.
Okay.
So, I don't know necessarily what they were hoping for us to do, but at least now, my charge was to meet with Mr. Kundoff and sort of get some sort of a, at least a drawing that we can operate off of.
Yeah, so, realistically, they're just trying to make some improvements to the trails, you know, and so I think their intentions are good, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't stepping on any toes from a municipal perspective with the town, and what, you know, if there are trails that go onto town property that maybe are, you know, have some uses that we're not aware of, you know, I think it was the position of the committee here that any improvements to trails that are on school property or to the cross-country trail, we'd be happy with. You know, we'd want to know what they were doing specifically, but I don't think we saw any issue with that, so.
So, and again, as we mentioned to the committee, we're certainly willing to reach out to our students and see if they want to do some community service out there, which is great. Some of our classes, the biology classes could go out there and do some stuff as well, environmental-
The next best step, I'm not sure which, maybe with our policy subcommittee, just have a little more of a working session, invite the folks from the conference, conservation? Were they from Conservation? What were the folks?
I think it was the Trails Committee.
With the Trails Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe Conservation as well.
Yeah, we'll invite those folks maybe to a policy review committee, and we can sit down in your office and kind of go over in a little more detail, and then maybe bring a recommendation back, and maybe we invite the town administration as well, just so we clear up any, and Mr. Kundoff as well, just so we all have, we're all exactly aware of what we want to do, and no one has any issues with it.
There is, there is one area that came up that's a little bit of a question that we need to look into on the cross-country trail. There is, it is very close, and in the drawing, it looks like it might actually just enter into land that is actually not ours. So, we're going to need to look into that. But, we don't, this, we're not sure how accurate the drawing is. We think it's pretty accurate, but there's a little section that may cross into some private property that we'll need to investigate. I mentioned it to Bill Kundoff, and he said that gave me some information, so we can check in with the property owners to see if they have it marked off, and we can figure out whether or not, in fact, that little section is, might be on their property, and then if we need to get an easement, or we'll just put it in the cross-country trail on one or the other.
And that's actually a 2008 proposed map, so it's 10 years old as well, so there could have been some changes.
So, I wasn't going to make copies of this, so-
No, that's, yeah, I think, like I said, I think maybe it's more of a working session versus a, you know, this would be good to sit down with those folks again, just to go through the detail again, and then have the recommendations.
I was going to double back to Bill Kundoff, and he was going to look to see if we could make this into an electronic copy for us, so that, but at the time, he didn't have, he wasn't able to put his hands on it.
I know Mark Munjam is now on Conservation Committee, and he has very good knowledge of the cross-country trail as well as the other trails.
It's my understanding that the cross-country trail was, on this document, may have been put in by Mark, as a matter of fact.
Wouldn't be surprised.
That's why, it could be very accurate, and, but we'll have to take a look to find out, and now that Mrs. Sokol is here, we can have her reach out to the homeowner, and we'll see if we can't go out and take a walk on the land to find out if in fact, the cross-country trail, just a section of it, real small section goes onto private property. So, that was all that I actually had, was the, just to let you know that we do have the map, and as you said, we can, I can work with you to put together a meeting and see if we can't get that group back together again.
Yeah, so, what I'll do is I'll reach out to the folks, and I can't remember either of their names right now, but I know I have from my notes there to them.
Well, Leslie Bro was one of them, and I don't, I forget who the other woman was.
Becky Gallagher? Okay. I thought there was someone else as well, but, okay.
She did not come to the meeting, but I think she sent the original letter.
Okay, that's what it was. Okay. And there was someone else that was up here with Leslie that night, though, too.
Right, Leslie had just been in the audience.
Yeah, so I think Leslie's kind of spoke up, yeah, there was Becky and another woman that were kind of spearheading.
That's right, there were two women, you're right. That's right.
So, I'll remember who they were and reach out to them, and try to get some time-
They should be in our meeting minutes note as well, so.
Yeah. Okay.
So, that was it.
Any questions for Mr. Mainz?
Nope.
Okay. Onto our school committee and subcommittee reports.
Okay, lots of bills at the end of the year. It was eight batches on June 13th, 2019, totaling $99,840.90. Twelve batches on June 20th, 2019, $100,567.39. Thirteen batches on 6/27, 2019, $385,684.25. And fourteen batches on June 30th, 2019, $153,399.86. And nothing unusual.
Any questions on council panel report? Seeing none. Move on to our consent agenda. First up, we have our June 19th, 2019 meeting minutes. I did not see any issues with the read-through this afternoon.
Yeah, so, on the meeting minutes, under subcommittee report, under superintendent's assessment, it indicates, on the second paragraph, Superintendent Mainz stated that funding is the only thing holding the district back from student learning goal number one, which would be updating curriculum development opportunities. We don't, it's not, the word "special" does not need to be in there. It's just curriculum development.
I got you. Thank you.
Ms. Keegan found that one, so.
Okay. Updating curriculum development opportunities. All right. Now, so, any other amendments?
Excuse me.
Okay, if I have no other amendments, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the June 19th, 2019 school committee meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Motion from Lisa, and a second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Next up, appointment of FY 2020 school physician. Ms. Keegan?
Okay, each year, we need to appoint the school physician. I have provided to you the contract that we use, and Dr. Elizabeth T. Soraco has been the physician for a number of years, and has agreed to do it going forward for another year, and is agreeing to keep it at the same rate as FY 19 as well, which is $3,500 for the fiscal year.
Can you remind us, under what circumstances, we engage Dr. Soraco's services?
I've had to call a couple of times on some medical concerns, so she's provided some advice and some recommendations, and if we need her expertise, we can reach out to her, and she is available to us.
And the nurse leader as well, and I know that-
We haven't used very often, but-
But she does also provide protocols on various things as well, that require a physician's authorization, so to speak.
Do you have any other questions on appointing Dr. Soraco?
We approve Dr. Elizabeth T. Soraco as the school physician for the fiscal year 2020 pursuant to the Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 53.
Second, second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. FY 2020 athletic fees and family caps. This is a carryover from last meeting with some further details.
So, as we know, this has been sort of a bit of a work in progress. The committee had sort of wanted to entertain the possibility of reinstituting caps back into our athletic program. As we know, the, we have gone through sort of a roller coaster on fees over the last seven or eight, nine years. We've been holding steady, thanks to the support, continued support of the boosters, and also the planning that the committee has done. And so, one of the things that we were looking at is our participation numbers continue to be pretty strong, very little fluctuation in the number of students that are participating. This year was, I think it was, it was a differential of one person, I think it was, one participation total from the previous year, so, and we had a, we have a cap of, I mean, sorry, a fee that we had dropped to 200, and so the question was, could we look into the viability of doing possibly, well, the first aspect was to do family caps, but then we also talked about the possibility that we might entertain an individual cap as well. So, in going back and looking at this, I put together sort of a schematic, if you will, as to how it would all work, all the way up to a family with four students playing three sports during the course of the year, and what the breakdown would be. And basically, what the committee had said was, let's take a look at, on that third season, that we would do a $50 reduction on the third season. So, if I'm playing the first season, it's $200, if I played the second season, I'm now up to $400, and then if I get into, and I play the third season, it would, instead of being 600, it would be 550, and that would be the financial benefit that we would do for the individual athlete. And then, you can see on the family cap with two athletes playing, if they play one season, it's 400, if they play two seasons, it's 800. And then, it dawned on me that maybe one out of the two will play a third season, so you have to worry about that variable as well. So, if we had two students, same family, they've played the two seasons, and one student decides to play the next season, instead of it, it would be 750, and then, oh, actually, I gotta look at that.
Yeah, that doesn't seem right.
I think I just noticed that just now.
Should be 950, right?
950, I think it might be a typo there. Yep, sorry about that. We'll have to correct that, but, yep. And then, two athletes, it would be 11. And then, so basically, the question becomes for the committee, and I think that the numbers are pretty accurate for the rest of it, but if there's three students in a family, and they're all playing, and then there's four students, I don't think we've ever had five students from the same family in the same building at the same time. Could happen, could have twins, but I don't think we've ever had that. I don't think we've ever had four either, but I figured might as well try to plan for, in case it does happen, two sets of twins or something along those lines. So, that basically is the way in which the process goes, and so, I did invite Mrs. Sokol, our high school athletic director, to join us tonight, if you would like, she can certainly join us and talk a little bit about the participation, but the plan was to go back to family caps and individual caps, and basically add a $50 reduction per season, on the third season, I should say.
Yeah, so, I, I'm glad we have this all laid out for the two athlete, the three athlete, the four athlete family, but it looks like it's really just the individual cap is being applied all the way through, no matter how many athletes you have in your family. We're just giving the break on that.
On that third season, each individual would get a $50, and that's kind of what, I thought that's what you had said when I left, right?
Yeah.
So, that's basically what I did, was to do the $50 reduction for each student. That's why I did the one student, as a two students, three.
Yeah.
It gets a little bit more convoluted as you go to four, you know, three of them might play, two of them might play three, who knows, the combinations, but, but you're right, that's absolutely, the point was that there would be a $50 individual, basically per individual, a reduction on the third season.
Okay.
I think that this is what it's called out.
Yeah.
I'll correct that mathematical mistake in there.
Okay.
I think my, must have been, we have to come up with it. Does everybody know Mrs. Sokol?
Is this with a booster donation or off the top?
This is with the booster's donation.
So, it's bringing that down to 200 per student, and then the tier process takes in?
Right, right. So, the boosters did, that was, and that's, this is why it's taken a little bit of time to get through the whole process, but with their generosity, and then the committee wanting to look at, could we do this and so forth, I mean, I didn't project out, my assumption is that enrollments are holding in a-
Oh, actually, we did, I was able to, while you were out, I was able to actually finish, actually, I did, and Stacy in my office did. She actually was able to update that last season, the spring, and as you'll see, there was a little bit of a jump because we added the JV baseball.
Baseball, right.
And also, there was a good increase of 10, actually, in girls varsity tracks. You see, there was a nice increase there, so, but I don't see any problem with this financially in doing this. We did receive the $10,000 donation. You can see that participation is improving, actually, which is nice to see.
Yes, and Sokol, I was just asking, do you think that the fees are having an impact on participation rates? Or do you think it's a neutral factor at this point? You know, it seems like going from 300 down to 225 definitely kind of had an impact.
I think at this point, it's a neutral, yeah. I think if it was 300 or something more, you'd see less kids playing, because then they have to choose. There's a lot of families, you know, $300 per sport, but I think with the help of the boosters and the work of everyone keeping it at 200, you know, that's a, that's a doable number, I think, for a lot of families. And now with the online payment, they can put it on a credit card and kind of, you know, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's true at some times, you know, so I think, I think it's a good idea, yeah.
And it's proven out with the participation rates as well, as we spoke of in the past, is when you look at that FY 16 column, it was quite a decrease.
Oh, yeah, that was 300.
Right, and then it did increase when we did bring it back down.
That's right.
So, and we're Douglas, I mean, it is a small town, you want to try to offer students and children in the town more opportunities to do things.
Well, it feels like we've reached a pretty good place with this.
Right, well, I think, I think your point is well taken, right, is that, when it was at the 300, there were some, there were some decisions that really needed to be made. And again, if you think of it, if I'm a student athlete, but I may not be, you know, we'll take basketball, I might not be number one through five, I might not be one through seven or eight on the team. If I'm nine, it's a lot of money to really not get a lot of, a lot of playtime. And the same thing we noticed with the indoor track and so forth, that's a lot of money to run real fast down the thing for 50 yards. Come in first place, but, but to do that. But she balanced it because one son ran, ran distance, so it worked out really well.
Per mile.
I probably got my money's worth.
But, but it does, I mean, I think we really saw that as an issue.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I think one of my goals with this was to kind of, you know, kind of optimize participation rates, you know, and find that, you know, kind of equilibrium, you know, fee there, you know, it feels like this data is stating that, at least telling me that we've kind of reached that point, I think, so.
I think one other piece that people need to understand is that we did have a drop in enrollment numbers as well, so participation numbers would, came down based on that as well.
Yeah, so I think the fact that you're seeing even larger participation rates in FY 19, even with 60 or 70 fewer students, that's the whole district, but, yeah.
Still a government, yeah.
I think, I think it shows that-
Oh, yeah, there's at least, I think, 15 or 20 kids at the high school, less than the previous year, so. So, hopefully that works out, and that's what you were looking for, and don't run away yet, Mrs. Sokol, you never know, there may be some questions to show up.
I have something for you. Because you brought up online payment, it just startled me for a moment, because I just remembered, isn't there like a drop dead date that people have to register for sports, for the fall?
Register, yeah, well, for the fall, yes, it's August 8th, it's August 8th, because it starts, the 22nd, football starts the 14th. And what happens is Melanie, the school nurse, has been wonderful as far as helping with the physicals, checking them in her files and online, so she's been pretty much, she and I have, we go through everything, and then we make the kid eligible, we just click off on family ID that they're eligible to try out. If they do it the night before, you know, Melanie doesn't have time, or if the kid's physical's expired, we tell them, your physical's expired, it gives them a little bit of time to get one. I mean, is that a drop deadline? We like to say that, yes, but we always keep it open a little bit longer, you know, some kids are away on vacation, there are exceptions. We never say, no, you cannot try out because the deadline is closed, I always reopen it. But it's just to make our job-
It's possible, yeah.
At the transition to trying out, you know, we're standing there collecting physicals, it's just we try to get it smooth. It's getting to a really good, real, real good point. And now middle school is using family ID for the fall first time for cross-country, so we're going to see how that be a smoother process.
Okay.
Along with the sports program, something just to keep in mind, and we've talked about it, we have never really done anything with it, but you mentioned Melanie, and the first thing that dawned on me was Melanie and Pam before, not Pam, oh, I just drew a blank.
Kathy Kimmell?
No, 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 don't, Pat, Pat, why did I say Pam?
It's only one letter.
They start the same day as the school year starts, and that has always created a bit of a problem with validating all of their health records in a timely manner, because they're not obligated to come in. And Pat was really good, she would come in and go through them and make sure that everything was up to date, because we can't have anyone go out that's not definitively identified as having a physical. So, one of the things that we had talked about was the possibility of a per diem for Melanie Goucher to come in, I think we said the day before and the day of the start of the program, to get everybody's insurance things up. We have never really taken any steps on it, and I don't think it needs to be a full day, but she would need the morning anyways to be there, so, something that we should consider, it'll just make Mary's life less chaotic that first couple, those first couple of days, because, you know, the kids come in and they're dropping off paperwork in a fever pace.
And I don't have access to her files.
Correct, that's the problem.
So, if the kid says it's on in the nurse's files, then, you know, I, that's not my business, so.
For now, we should just get the word out, because like, I didn't even know that. I mean, it was told to me, but I totally forgot about it.
So, there was, did you have your, your information night previously?
Yeah, I'll tweet something out, sorry.
One call coming up soon.
It's like a reminder.
Yep. I'll put something out on Twitter as well, that reminder that's coming up.
It's not easy to go get a physical.
No, that's the problem.
Last minute, so they need a little bit of time.
Sometimes kids end up, you know, they don't, they can't practice, and I shouldn't say sometimes, it happens a lot.
My kid went to Minute Clinic today to get his sports physical for college.
So, the great thing about family IDs, they'll send you an email, once your email, once your physical's uploaded in a family ID, it will remind you three months out that you need time to get a physical, and, I mean, and we all forget, I have kids, I forget, and, you know.
So, would the committee want me to explore what that would, that would cost in order to have them come in for four hours?
Yeah, I think it's worth exploring.
Basically, one day of per diem?
Yep.
For the high school nurse? Yeah, it can't be very much, no. Yep, but it just would make, of course, hopefully she'll want to do it as well, that's the other thing.
The other thing.
Right, right.
Especially if she knows the timeframe in advance for planning purposes.
Yeah, we've talked about it before she left, and she seemed pretty on board with coming in and helping out. She always does, she's very accommodating.
And Pat was great as well, so, okay.
So, we'd be looking for a motion, and I know you provided some language here, but just, you know, to note that, you know, because the language in the motion refers to the attached schedule, but we've made one minor adjustment to that schedule.
And if you want, you can say, if you don't mind my, if you want, you can say as amended, because we did amend that, too, so.
So, if anyone would like to use the language that you provided for a motion, just mention that with amended the schedule, please.
So, I move to approve the reduction of the Douglas High School athletic fee from 225 to 200 per sport, per individual and institute. The individual and family caps as indicated in the attached proposed fiscal year 2020 Douglas High School athletic fee schedule inclusive of individual and family caps, dated July 17th, 2019, as amended in our meeting.
All right, we have a motion from Julie, a second, a second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sokol.
On behalf of the kids, I would say the same thing, that's a, and the families, I should say.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the kids end up enjoying it, I think it's more, it's more for the families.
Good point.
All right, so we have reaffirmation of student activity fund accounts.
Yes, and I had brought this to you at the last meeting, and it was missing the class of 2022, and the class of 2020 class trip, which are on there now, so we're all set.
So, those accounts had been established, it's just a matter of, okay?
Yep, and we had done that, yeah, before, yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think so.
No.
So, we're just looking for a motion to reaffirm all the student-
Or to affirm.
Okay.
Reaffirm, yeah, reaffirm.
Reaffirm all the student activity fund accounts.
Affirm, reaffirm.
So moved. Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Lisa and a second from Julie to affirm our student activity accounts as presented this evening. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Yeah, because you actually have to be by law, they have to actually be voted on to even have it to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this is just a kind of a thing, it's not even an absolute requirement, but the auditor's like to have that done, which is, it is a good thing to do.
Cross our Ts.
You have them all listed out, so.
Okay, next up, we have DMS Student Activity Fund Checking Account Limit.
Okay, so, in March of 2015, Mrs. Batchelder had requested that we increase their, the middle school checking account limit from $7,500 to $10,000, and we have actually run into some issues, and actually, for background, particularly for Becky, student activity funds have two accounts, savings account and checking account. The principals, under Mass General Law authorized, may be authorized by the school committee to have a checking account, and they have to set a limit on it. All deposits that come in from any student activities, like all that you saw on this list here, must be deposited in the savings account, and then say, you know, what, the way it was, $7,500. $7,500 goes from the savings account into a checking account, thereby allowing the principals to write out checks to pay immediately. And then what they do is they put it on a warrant, and they replenish the checking account.[1771.75] Problem is, is that it was, actually ended up being too high a limit, so now we've actually run into the problem, we're actually in the negative, actually, Jean cannot, for the last warrant, transfer through the warrant process, the amount to replenish the checking account, so it actually needs to be reduced. And we don't need it for several reasons anyway, we are now doing weekly warrants instead of bi-weekly, as we all know, and so they really don't have a reason to do that. And we haven't really run into, oh, the other thing is, is we, when I created the Student Activity Fund Guidelines Manual, if you'll recall, there was, anything 5,000 or over must go on a warrant, because that allows Jean and I to actually review everything prior to anything being paid. Once a checking account check is written out, it's too late for us to review anything.
Right.
And if, and there are circumstances, it can happen where I, either myself or more, more likely, the, from an authority perspective, the town accountant does have the authority to refuse to replenish, and that would create a problem as well. We know we haven't had that problem here, so, but there's really no reason to do that. In fact, at the middle school and at the high school, they realize the benefit of doing it through the warrant process, so whenever possible, even if it's below that limit, they've been paying through the regular warrant process.
Okay.
Because it allows more reviews, so for many reasons, it's just not necessary, so it'll resolve the problem that we've had actually over the past two years, to reduce it from 10,000 back to the 7,500.
Yes, it only raises the question, is there any benefit to go even lower, or is?
I think, I think that, that was that way for years, you know, that, that figure, I think for now, we'll just go back to this, I don't want to go, you know, too low, because you can have, the problem with the middle school is, most of their activities take place in June.
Yeah.
So, they have very little time, in fact, I'd say probably 90 to 95%.
Yeah.
Jean actually reminded me of that, because I, we were going back and forth about what to do, and said, oh, yeah, I forgot about that, you know, and I looked at, and actually their Excel spreadsheet for the entire year, and I said, oh, yeah, I can see that, you know, it reminded me. You know, maybe in the future, we can change that at any time, maybe next year, we can look again and see, but we definitely, the 10,000 is creating a problem.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
So, I move to approve the reduction of the Douglas Middle School Student Activity Fund Checking Account Maximum from 10,000 to 7,500.
Motion from Julie.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Right, and then next up, we have DMS Items for Disposal.
So, yesterday, we were going through the, the storage room at the middle school, a couple of things that we were looking for. There have been nine cafeteria tables that have been sitting in there, that they, they have no seats on them, makes it kind of difficult to use it, and they also have springs that are missing, they can't replace the springs, they're sort of just dinosaurs hanging around, but they take up a lot of space in the storage area. So, we would like to try to dispose of those, and before we dispose of them, Jeff is going to finalize to see if there's any that might be saved, there are some possibilities that maybe one or two of them might be saved, but if they're, if they're not salvageable, that we want to get rid of them. They've been, they've been in there for, since the, since the building was finished, was renovated, and they're not being used, and there's no way they could be used, they need too many parts.
And they create a hazard too, with the space they take up, you can't even move in and throw, so.
But the other piece of it was that they were, they were so old that you couldn't lift them up, you needed two or three people to lift them up, the springs were gone, and it, so, they were, a lot of them were scavenged for parts for the ones that were actually working, so.
So, why save them?
Well, they came with the building, so we can't just throw them out, we gotta go through the process. If you guys saying that, if they're no good, go ahead and get rid of them, so we would be looking to get rid of those. And then, on the science books, they also got transferred during the move and so forth, and I believe that they are listed there for you.
Yeah.
But there, yeah, there's 405 textbooks, they're listed there, there's some workbooks, they're not at all even remotely close to meeting the standards that are presently in force at the middle school. Some of the books go back to the 19, early 1990s, so they've, again, just been collecting dust in there, and we'd like to discard them, we could, if you want, put it out on the list serve, I don't know anybody's gonna be knocking down the door for, for some 1996 books, but if you want, we could do that.
Just get right on.
So, there's 405 of those, between combination of workbooks and textbooks, they're, and it is, it's, um, science, all science books.
Any questions? Comments, concerns?
All right, so I'll move to approve the disposal of nine cafeteria tables and 405 textbooks and workbooks at the middle school deemed to be of no value and beyond repair or usefulness to the school district.
Motion from Julie.
Second.
And a second from Kelly. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Great, that completes our consent agenda. Next up, we have our School Business and Operation Management Report.
This evening, I just have the first of the FY 2019 year-end reclassifications, and the first one is just moving payroll for the elementary school part-time nurse from the, from school choice to the general fund, yeah, for a number of reasons. And the second one is just utilizing the balance of school health grant, just a reclass to use up the balance of what's, what's in that grant.
Okay.
And the third one is just a typo between, you know, 121 and 140 as far as the right school, and that's it.
Okay. Any questions from Skigun? Okay, looking for a motion then?
All right, so I move that we, I don't know how to say it, I guess, I move that we approve, oh, fiscal year 2019 year-end reclassifications, number one, school committee, July 17, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion from Julie.
Second.
And a second from Becky. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Wow. Not a new record, but that was a quick one. Geez, yeah.
You make those motions, you're great.
All right, so, any other topics not anticipated?
Yes, one thing real quick.
Yes.
Just wanted to update the committee, we have been in the process of interviewing, we are filling positions, we have, I believe, just one teaching position left to be filled, and they're interviewing on Friday for that position, which this is an all-time record, actually, having them before, before August, but a few other people have been hired since the last time I presented to you, so I'll come back in August and do an update.
Okay.
But we hope to have all of the teaching positions filled by sometime next week, and go from there for the paraprofessionals and so forth, but we've done pretty well, so.
That's great.
Actually, I have a question. I believe the policy subcommittee was going to meet.
Yeah, so we, we got a policy and probably should do a budget at some point too, as well.
Well, just to address the concern that was brought.
Yes.
I just didn't know where that was.
Yeah, it's, it was dropped by me, I have my apologies.
I have that, the list of all the committees there and so forth, because I am on, taking a couple of days of vacations, I will not be in Monday, Tuesday of next week, but I'm, I am the second half of the week, if that works best for the.
But I'm out all next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are things, unless it's not, because there are things I definitely need to be.
This will be a policy, this is, this is about a.
Oh, unless you're only gonna do something, you know, but there's a bunch of other things, yeah.
Becky, have next week for a policy?
Yeah.
Later in the week?
Yep.
Thursday's best for me.
Okay, let's plan on Thursday.
Check your calendars and just shoot me what works for you.
So, yeah, let's plan on covering that issue as well as maybe even just the, if I, if I can get ahold of our trail folks, I'll try to have them for part of the meeting.
Yeah.
If not, just that at least the three of us can, can review the map some more.
Very good.
Okay.
So, we'll, the only, could you maybe let Lauren know that tomorrow that we're gonna do a policy subcommittee meeting on Thursday, because I'm gonna be out.
Okay, Thursday, policy subcommittee, and what time, Brett?
Morning work, 9 o'clock work.
9:00 AM, okay.
9:00 AM, or February.
If it doesn't, just let, just let us know.
It should be, yeah, it should be, and I'll let you know.
Policy subcommittee next Thursday, 9:00 AM.
I'm tentatively scheduled to leave at 9:00 if that works, and I can move it if we have to.
Right, but at least we have, we'll have it posted.
I'll send her an email, a reminder as well, but Thursday at 9:00.
Thursday, 9:00 AM, policy subcommittee.
Okay, yes, regards to the budget, subcommittee, I guess, how, how close are we to close? Do we have any idea?
Oh, it's a normal time, it's always, it's no different any, any year, because you go, have to go through July 15th for the very final warrant per Department of Revenue.
Yep.
And, you know, and then the process of posting and doing the warrant, and then you, you start your, you know, final encumbrances and all of that, so, you know, we're on schedule right now for our meeting in August 14th.
Okay, so do we want to have subcommittee before then?
Only because I, there was something that we wanted to discuss.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm on vacation next week, so you can do it.
I'll be away the week after.
And I'm away the 10th to the 18th.
You're away the 10th to the 18th.
Which is during the meeting, the next meeting.
Okay.
Actually, we should discuss that, because I'm not gonna be able to be at the meeting on the 14th.
Can't remember if we had an alternate for the committee? I have it on my desk, but I don't have it in front of me.
For budget, I think it would be.
Wait, so, you're, you're, you're around the 5th through the 9th, though? So, I'm around, I'm also around August 5th through the 9th, so if that works, so.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.